Anyone who cares to stand up and join us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone. And Superintendent Payne, we turn it over to you.
Um, so, uh, an update for the elementary school district. There was a reported break in at the Molly Stark Elementary School last night. Uh, I want to confirm that. An unlawful entry and unlawful mischief as a building was entered and there was damage done. The individuals have been identified using video and we are working with the Dannington Police Department. Um, they are aware of the situation or assisting. Uh, it's an ongoing investigation. The school safety team is following up with uh, those folks who uh, are connected to the individuals.
Great, I think they can share. Um, so with the understanding that this is an open law enforcement investigation and there may be things the superintendent either knows and can't share or simply doesn't know, does anyone have any questions for the superintendent?
Mr. Payne, is, are there alarm systems on the school buildings?
There are.
So why was the alarm not activated once the building was breached?
I don't know that.
But we'll find out about that.
Yep, working with Vic Line, who is the district's safety officer and the school team to understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Very great, so moving on, uh, public comments. Director, I don't see any, there are no members of the public in person. I don't see anyone online. Okay, very good, so moving on. So, um, we have a discussion on the conflict of interest policy. A copy of the policy was distributed to everyone here. Um, for anyone who's listening to this, uh, either live or subsequently on CAT TV. The policy specifically, specifically we're referring to is SBSU Policy seven two zero five. Uh, which if you navigate to the SBSU dot org website, there's a tab for policies. You can click on that and find it pretty easily after that. Also hard copies can be picked up at the SBSU office and I'm not sure whatever, what other accessibility is, accessibility accommodations are made, but certainly accommodations can be made for folks to access that policy if they don't have it. Um, I won't read it to, I won't read the entirety of the policy out loud, but I will note a few things specifically please. Within the body of the policy, um, conflicts of interest are are treated in the exact same way as the appearance of conflicts of interest. Um, both are treated in the exact same way, both are treated in the same manner. And so in other words, this policy treats appearances of conflicts of interest just as seriously as it treats conflicts of interest or can, what we might call confirmed conflicts of interest. Uh, for the purposes of this conversation, I am intending to only refer to appearances of conflicts of industry, uh, conflicts of interest. If I accidentally simply say conflict of interest, it's meant to be understood as the appearance of a conflict of interest. Um, as per section D two of the policy seventy two oh five, there is a written complaint that's been signed, it's been distributed to the board members. I will read this and then I will extrapolate on this. To the SVU ESD Board of Directors, the following complaint is furnished in accordance with SBSU Policy seventy two oh five entitled Board Member Conflict of Interest. Sandy Foster is an elected member of the SVU ESD Board of Directors. While she was serving in that capacity in late August two thousand twenty five, she applied for employment with the SBSU as the interim assistant superintendent. This action created the appearance of a conflict of interest. The ramifications of this appearance of a conflict of interest will persist whether or not Sandy Foster is hired as the interim assistant superintendent. The specifics of these ramifications will be articulated in full at the special meeting of the SVU ESD Board of Directors on nine twenty five, two thousand twenty five. This written complaint is inclusive of all comments by the team made at that meeting relative to the appearance of a conflict of interest. Sincerely, me, Christopher B. Murphy, dated today. So, here is what we're up against.
Question first.
Sure.
Who's the person that brought the complaint?
I'm bringing the complaint.
How did you know about that? How did you know she had applied for a job? Because when you apply for something, it shouldn't be released.
Additionally, as the leader of the board, that's not your position, your position is to decide. In this capacity, you're, you're not only acting as prosecutor, jury and judge. That's a conflict.
So, I will say, so the policy spells out exactly how we're to deal with conflicts of interest or appearances of conflict. It begins with the person who creates the appearance of a conflict of interest coming forth and declaring as much in the minutes. When that doesn't happen, either because of oversight or because of um, uh, it being intentional or because there's a disagreement on whether or not there's a conflict of interest, then any board member can bring that complaint. It does not specify that the chair needs to refuse themselves of that responsibility. It's a matter of bringing the bringing the complaints to the board for us to discuss. And I would say like, there is no, there's no function within this policy for us as a board to decide anything necessarily, merely to note whether or not there's a conflict or the appearance of a conflict.
That answers one of the questions.
Okay, specifically to how I found out Sandy had applied for this position this time. I, I don't recall. Um, there have been so many conversations and emails that have occurred around this with other board chairs, with Sandy, with attorneys.
So this has been discussed outside, outside of our board?
This board has not discussed this at all, but your board chair has sought some legal guidance as to what we need to do. I have spoken to members of this board individually about what appears to be the case here and have had conversations with other board chairs. Um, those board chairs being boards on which Sandy sits. So, and I would say, so the answer to you, to use the language specifically Glenn, there's no prosecution, there's no judge, there's no jury, because there's an decision that needs to be reached. Merely.
So then why are we here?
Because we need to according this policy to declare in the minutes of the meeting that there's the appearance of a conflict of interest. And that's what I'm bringing forth today.
Did you seek to communicate with me?
So this time, no. So what I'd, what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to do is finish the, the, the commentary as I prepare. And then absolutely we should discuss this to the board. I do want to know that five thirty, there's an SBSU meeting. So if need be, we can table this and continue it later on, but I will say this, this moving forward. So here is, here is the appearance of a conflict of interest, should Sandy be hired for that position? Um, the, the only conflict that I'm aware of, the appearance of a conflict that would persist if Sandy were hired for the position of interim assistant superintendent is if she also stayed a member of this board.
That's illegal.
I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking of the MAU board, I'm speaking of the SU board. Um, that's their, that's their matter to decide.
That's illegal.
So maybe, well, I also think this conversation will go best if nobody interrupts anyone else, because everyone will have their say. Um, so however, if Sandy is not hired in that position, the appearance or the appearance of a conflict of interest has begun, the problems persist. And here's what I mean by that. Among the functions and responsibilities of this board that we've been elected to serve, to let, elected to do by our constituents is that we are the last stop for, yes, the employees who bring grievances to their chain of command. Should an occasion arise when a member of the screening committee or hiring committee that doesn't select Sandy as the interim superintendent brings such agreements to this board, should Sandy not vote in favor of that person, it could be construed as retaliation. And thereby potentially opens this board to litigation. So that's problematic. I would say similarly, if Sandy, as a member of this board, goes on to criticize a superintendent or the assistant superintendent, the assistant, the interim assistant superintendent, regardless of what other, whatever credibility such critiques may have, those things could also be construed as a conflict of interest. And there, or I'm sorry, not as a conflict of interest, those could also be construed as being retaliatory in nature. And again, potentially opens up this board to litigation by those people. Right? The integrity of this board to do certain functions that we have been charged to do are, are compromised by this appearance of a, of a conflict of interest that has been created by Sandy applying for this job. I would say, when we stop to consider the fact that Sandy is also one of our chosen representatives to the SU board, further complications exist. In that, one of the chief responsibilities of the SU board is to us, is to assess the superintendents. And again, if Sandy were not hired as the interim superintendent, any critique she may offer in that capacity also can be construed as retaliation. It also again opens up the, opens up the SU board and potentially this board as well to possible litigation. Also, the SU board is the final stop for other employees to make grievances against their, their management, which includes the interim assistant superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the director of HR. And if, if any of those people were to bring their complaints to the SU board and Sandy were to vote against them, again, that can be construed as retaliation and opens up the SU board and this board to litigation. So all of that is problematic.
What's, uh, what's the bottom line in this issue? You trying to get her thrown off this board?
Not at all, that's not at all.
That sounds like it.
Well, so let me be clear, the policy, which again, seventy two oh five, makes it clear, the board, no board can get rid of a member, right? That's up to the vote of the hall, one hundred percent. And there's nothing in this written document or what I'm about to say that suggests that we get rid of Sandy as a member of the ESD board, so not at all. What I'm saying is, the actions that she has chosen to take have created complications for the board. And what we, our, our responsibility as a board, above and beyond the feelings or the image of any one of its members, is to make sure that our integrity is, is unimpeachable. And that we can move forward and discharge the duties that we have been elected to do. And when a board member makes that job difficult, we need to acknowledge that and put it on the record as per our policy, and that's what this is about.
Just because she applied for a, a assistant, whatever position it was.
So Sandy, as a member of three boards, all of whom have an oversight capacity over the superintendent. So hey superintendent, hire me for this job. And so if she doesn't get hired for that job, there's, there's the problem. Because any action she may take against the superintendent can be viewed as retaliatory. Now, I, so, so that is, is, is the bulk of the problem right there. Another issue within this is that this policy specifically talks about when a member of the Board of Directors has the appearance of a conflict of interest, they need to come forth and say that, declare that in a meeting to be included in the minutes.
And you're the only one saying it.
Right, yes, and it's problematic, because even though Sandy applied for this.
I don't agree.
Sandy applied for this job in late August for the, the interim assistant superintendent position. We had a meeting like two weeks later in the beginning of September. That would have been Sandy's opportunity to declare that apparent conflict of interest, the appearance of a conflict of interest for the minutes in accordance with the policy. I don't know why she didn't. It's not my, it's not my business, and I don't think Sandy had any ill intent in any of this. I should make that clear right away. But the absence of ill intent does not remove the problems that are created through her actions. Now, I know for a fact that Sandy was aware of this policy when she chose in early September to not declare that conflict of interest. I know that, because in the spring of this year, Sandy applied for the assistant superintendent position. And she and I had a conversation both fable, voice to voice and via email wherein all of these problems that she would create were outlined to her, as well as steps that I felt incumbent upon me to take as board chair to lessen and mitigate the damage that I saw she was creating. Ultimately, Sandy chose to withdraw that application, so there was no issue at all. But in the springtime, these problems were outlined to Sandy. And yet now in the fall, these same problems have come to bear, because she is applying for what is essentially the same job. So again, I don't think Sandy had any ill intent, but she also knew full well what was expected of her and what the problems would be if she were to persist and apply for this position. So, we don't need to make a decision as a board about anything. Right? That's not what the policy calls for. That's not what I'm asking for. What I'm doing is putting it in the minutes, which is exactly what our policy says needs to have. But I would say this, we have elected Sandy as one of our three representatives to the supervisor union. That is an elected position, and I think we all as a board, none of us should make a, a decision tonight on this. But we'll be meeting in early October, and I think each of us as a board member should stop to consider whether or not Sandy can fulfill the responsibilities that she owes, she owes to this board as an SU member, given the appearance of the conflict of interest that she's creating. And I, what I think we should do is come back in October and have a conversation as to whether or not we ought to vote someone else to fill that slot that she currently holds as a representative to the SU from this board. So, and put that out there. That concludes, I think, what I wanted to say. And I would open it up for the board, for us to have a conversation.
I absolutely think that it's important that I get the voice at this table. Because it is the ethical duty and responsibility of me when there is an appearance of conflict of interest to share that. And if you're telling me right now that you are not acknowledging that I sent you an email after speaking with our legal team, our legal, then I, I don't know what happened to your email. I can tell you, I did send you an email specifically outlining that I was, had spoken to our attorney, our school attorney, not mine, our school attorney. And she had not only advised me, but she had also reviewed what was written before I sent it to the three board chairs. And in that, um, I did re, uh, recuse myself and step away from the SU board, um, as I did, well, I was away anyway in May, so it's irrelevant, but, um, I did that. The only reason that I would ever want to step in is because I was taught if you're going to voice an opinion about something that is happening and you have a way to change it or to support it, then you should never bury this truck. And I have been vocal in the respect that we have not had an assistant superintendent who has had any elementary background. Not the last time, and certainly didn't happen in this round. We didn't get, we didn't get to the point of nominating or appointing, um, an assistant superintendent. So becoming an interim for me only meant that I was going to help my community and student body and the teachers of this district, of this, of our community. To step out of retirement, you might think is an easy thing, but it took a lot of thinking and deciding whether or not it was something I wanted to do, and if it was something I felt I could be a benefit to our new superintendent. Understanding that there were so many pieces that had to be learned and that I already had that knowledge, it almost felt selfish not to, to step in. Regardless of the outcome, the point is, I'm here to serve the community. And that is what I'm here to do. I absolutely followed the, the conflict of interest policy by sharing that I would step back and sharing with you in order to maintain this transparency. So I am disappointed that we have to have a special meeting to discuss it. And I don't quite understand what I can do to help you to see that my participation is only to help our SCU. That's it.
So to respond to the questions you asked, so we may guess that received that email, but nowhere does the policy say that sending an email to the board chair covers you. What it says specifically is that you need to make the declaration in open session so that it's recorded in the minutes. That's what it says. And yes, and I know that you spoke with Dana, a lot of us have spoken to Dana about this, and Dana also clarified for you that this had to happen in open session. It did. And I would say just lastly, Sandy, your motives for applying, I think are probably great. I have no question about your motives, but your motives don't change the results and the problems that are created by the choice that you made. It doesn't, like, the two are not connected. You have, but from what you just shared, you have the best of intentions, and I believe that. But it doesn't change that now there's this mess that exists. And it will, and I, and I don't know where the hiring process is, but if you don't get hired for that job, those, those results persist. And they will persist for as long as you're on a board.
Um, that's an assumption that you're making. You're making a lot of assumptions.
I'm saying, no, I was, I'm, I'm pointing out, these are things that may happen. That's exactly how I phrase that. These are all possibilities, and they are real possibilities.
I don't think so. I don't think that my.
I believe that you don't think so. I believe that that's part of what the appearance of the conflict is.
Last word says you're providing, writing. Don't see.
Um, C two talks about it. When a board member becomes aware that he or she is in a position that creates a conflict of entrance or the appearance of a conflict of interest, as this finds state law or this policy, he or she will declare the nature and extent of the conflict or appearance of conflict for inclusion in the board minutes and will abstain from, pardon me, voting or participating in the discussion of the issue giving rise to the conflict.
So it doesn't say, you know, supervision or voting in the discussion.
I'm sorry, say that again, please, Jeff.
Applying for a position is not, and I don't know if you see that it's covered here. If I was, if you guys were giving me the V and A hospice, and I had to sit here and vote on that, you know, that one for me, I'd have to say, yes, I remember the V and A hospice, I'm getting employed by them, I'd just stay, and it says, you know, for, you know, you know, participating in the discussion of the given issue we rise to conflict. So, you know, like, I would have to step back. You know, I understand that. It doesn't say if you're applying for a position. Yeah, and that's the part I'm having a hard time with is like, there's nothing, and that, like, you know, it says, look at the state law, I just don't know the state law. For this policy, it doesn't say if you apply for a position.
Right, no.
It doesn't stop anybody from applying for a board.
What it says, if the, if a conflict is created or the appearance of a conflict is created, and that could be the result of any number of decisions, but certainly one of which is asking the person you supervise to hire you for it. And that's what this is. And again, I, Sandy, I think took the right step of, in an email saying she would refuse herself of that process. Of course, that is the right step to take. But it doesn't change all of that other collateral possible fallout that I outlined at the beginning.
But that, that's and I, and again. Speculation fallout.
Well, sure, but like, that's all we can do about what might happen in the future is speculate, but I think it's an informed speculation, just knowing about how these things can, can play out.
Here's a little something to look back at from what happened from the results of the past. In that, her application should have been held in the highest level of confidence where you were, and you know, not saying you, Chris Murphy, but that any other board chair should be made aware of the hiring of another board.
That's like.
Tell me why, tell me why.
Because that's a violation of her privacy?
I, I, and I get, and I don't know whether it is or not Glenn, but I would think that as that any document that is submitted to a public body like a school district is open, is not protected by any kind of privacy.
I've mentioned that they are not released until a certain point.
I, I don't know. I don't know one way or the other.
I can say that I have, because I've served on a number of committees where we've signed off on confidentiality agreements.
Okay, I mean, our, yeah, if you can find somewhere, I mean, and I guess this, you know, whether we want to apply that, whether we want to say that me becoming aware of the hiring, uh, of, of applications to another board like removes the conflict of interest? Man, I, I don't, I, I don't believe that that is a conflict of interest.
I think that whether it was Sandy, Cindy, any of us should have had the anonymity of the application seen, seen towards conclusion. Because, so, in the very end, this could all be for none.
Mm-hmm, so, so let me say, so let me reflect.
Or could be for, for so.
Sure.
I, I can't answer that.
Let me reflect on a couple things. Maybe part of, well, let me just to, to answer that, maybe what we, part of what we need to do is to get clarity from our own legal counsel about what the expectation of privacy is for people applying for public positions, right? Maybe this board, the SU board, any of the boards can do better moving forward about how we handle such information if it were to come to us, about who is applying for what. But I would say that is a separate issue than the issue that we're here to discuss tonight about this very specific conflict of interest. If anyone has a, has a view of any one of us having a conflict or the appearance of a conflict, we need to follow the policy. Every single one of us needs to follow the policy.
I need to just point out, we had a situation, I mean, a board member applied for a position within the district. A supervisor position, position, and they were serving the school board, they're off the job while they're serving the school board, but they were not asked to step down. We talked about this position.
From the board. Okay, I'm not asking some.
And so, I mean, it seems like there's double standards between different. You know, I mean, it's happened in the past with this person, actively said, you know, they disclosed the board. We found out after they found out, after we, they were involved in the position. And they're sitting in the board, applied for the position in the district, then acted off of the position, that's when they were told they needed to resign. So I mean, it seems like, you know, same situation, different, just.
So.
And I was super, you know, super into the prior superintendent, knew that person applied, because he interviewed him. I mean, you know, it seems like there really is a double standard in some of these things. So I mean, I think that seemed cautious, because he did not disclose he applied for the job, and if, if we're saying that we can look at applications, which is, we're applying, that anybody in the public can look at applications for jobs. I mean, that is, I believe that, you know, I'm not now, I'm an employee expert. But I don't think anybody can walk this door and say, I want to see who applied for this superintendent position.
I would guess that's right, Jeff. I mean, that's not what I was implying.
But even that's what it said. Yeah, they're saying anybody in public pick up, look at that.
Quickly accessed, yeah.
I mean, I think it really is a, you know, sacred, when you apply for a job, it should go to whoever's taking those things. Like, there's an issue, you know, we should not be, it should be done effectively, you know, from an open session, because somebody's applying for jobs, and, you know, if Nick wants to release somebody who applies for a job's name, I believe there's some issues around that. I mean, I just don't know.
Sure, so I, I guess what I would say that if anybody has, so one, I think we ought to as a board, get legal guidance about how we deal with information from another, how one board deals with information coming from another board. I think that is, that's a valid thing for us as a board to figure out, so that we can move forward, because if that is problematic, how the information came to me, we should be able to firmly identify that and avoid it in the future.
And there should be, you know, there should be, you know, because it doesn't matter where you're applying for the job. I mean, names should not be released to anybody that has not gone through the form process.
Okay, sure, job. Can we also agree, though, that, that the way that a problem comes to light does not change the fact that a thing may be a problem? Can we also agree to that? Because I, 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 I grant anyone that, that maybe the way the information came to me was improper. Sure, I, I can grant, I don't know what the proper avenue would have been, or even if there is a proper avenue. But that is a different issue we as a board need to take up, and it doesn't remove the fact that I have, I have viewed this as the appearance of a conflict of interest, and according to policy and making this, making.
So right now, right now, we're just saying.
If I could just say, I want to turn to Stephanie, just because we've been talking.
I just want to ask some clarifying stuff, because what I guess what I'm wondering is, what's, why are you looking to put in the notes? Because I'm, I'm hearing like Sandy saying she didn't do anything because she didn't think that it was even an appearance of a conflict of interest. And you are taking it as it is an appearance of a conflict of interest. And I think, you know, she sought legal counsel, you sought some legal counsel, it's the same person, and maybe feels like there's some conflicting information, so what will go in the notes? Because right now, I don't feel like I confidently have enough information either way to hear that like um, this, this is an appearance of a conflict of interest. So I'm wondering what you're documenting or what you're expecting, you know, to be documented in the notes, because if this is, um.
Everything's being documented.
I know, but I guess I'm, well, I'm, that's not what I'm asking. I'm, I'm wondering, it's like, what is the message that we're looking to prevent? Like, is this a message of like, the board as a whole is saying this is a conflict, you know, or an appearance of a conflict of interest? Or is this, the board chair has presented this and we're going to hear more information? Because I'm just wondering, um, you know, what you're looking to get out of that and what you're looking, and how.
Great question.
Reflected.
It's the latter. It's, it's, again, this board does not need to render a decision whether or not what I presented was in fact a conflict or the appearance of the conflict.
Right, I know we're not voting on anything. I just wasn't sure what you were hoping to come across as like, oh, unified message.
Right, and I don't even know if we need a unified message. What we need in order to be, uh, consistent and compliant with the policy is for this conversation to take place in open session and be placed in the minutes. That's what the policy refers to.
Okay.
And it could have come from Sandy at our September meeting. I believe she was aware of the appearance of the conflict of interest at that time, because of the conversation we had in April of this year. She didn't, which is why we're having this meeting now.
When did I buy?
Uh, late eight, like, late August, I believe, prior to our September meeting, from what I understand.
I, I don't know that that's true. So you're, again, sharing information that may not be true.
It, so, it, I, again, depending on, now that questions have been raised about the legality of how we even know we know, I don't know that I should even ask the question of how I know that. Apart from saying, that was information that was presented to me. If there can be information that we want to share tonight or in the subsequent meeting that you applied after the ninth of September, I think that was.
I can point out one thing.
Sure, let me just finish the thought, please, if I could, Jeff. If, if, if there is, if there is documentation that your application is after September ninth, which is when I think our last board meeting was, I'm pulling it up now, then let's put that on in the minutes as well. Um, the ninth, yeah, the ninth of September. So maybe you, if you applied September tenth or after, then this isn't a problem. But if you applied prior to September ninth, I think you were in violation of the policy.
So.
And again, that's not a judgment on your motives at all. It's not a judgment of you as a person at all. It's a matter of, of me trying to document this to protect the integrity of the board moving forward, so that this board can demonstrate that the board is not complicit in what might look like a cover-up. I don't want that. I don't think any of us would want that, whether it exists or not.
So are you in violation?
The bottom line, not, my bottom line is the inclusion of the minutes that I find there to be the appearance of a conflict of interest and what the policy calls for, and that's all the policy calls for. Corinne, please.
Are, are you in violation of these policies by receiving this information that you shouldn't have received?
I don't know, some, it, it, I, that's, I think that's a, that's a valid question that's been brought up about whether or not that information should have been shared with me. I don't know whether it should have or not, but I have the information. And so, my view is, I need to be, I, like every other member of the board, needs to be complying with our policies and share it.
So, I just want to point one thing. So you filed a complaint, and it says, I'm following the policy right now. It says, you know, we can address the person who complains against, and if they don't concur, there's a conflict exists. The following board procedures must be followed. The board members discuss conflict of interest concerns that the member may have conflict of interest regarding a specific agenda item. What agenda items this board have to deal with? It's, it's very clear, I'm leaving behind two of that policy.
Right.
Specific agenda item.
Right, so the.
We don't have a specific agenda, so this should not.
Well, I'm trying to answer your question, the specific agenda items were those things that I talked about, about the responsibilities. Or, but there is no written agenda.
Okay, but.
Right now, what I'm saying is.
That's an elementary board, this is SBSU board's issue, so if we're. That's an elementary board, this is SPSU board's issue, so if we're following regarding a specific, so can you please specify?
Tell me what you mean by that, I didn't follow that, it's not, it's not the ESD's issue, it was the ESU's issue.
You write that there's a complaint. Sydney said, there's not a complaint. Part of this, what's fault? And it makes it very clear, the members may have a conflict of interest regarding a specific agenda item.
Yes.
That's what we need to discuss, so what's the specific agenda item?
I have outlined those potential specific incidents, those, which come for those agenda items.
Agenda items is something we vote on.
Well, no, we don't vote on that.
Well, it, but, but there is no agenda items, I mean, I think, I think what we had to do is, I think you recognize there's a potential conflict of interest, but when you follow the policy, it's regarding a specific agenda item, so I mean, I'm asking this specific, because your, your conflict of interest is based on a conflict of interest whether we're hiring for, putting a new roof on the building.
Sure.
You know, or if, you know, we want to have the ATM machine here and one, then third, we're just fucking ATM machine, that would be the conflict. But, you know, it should be a specific agenda item, so I mean, we're, we're looking at a poll. Um, I mean, I think if this was an SPSU question, yes, there's a specific agenda item, the hiring of assistant superintendent.
Yeah.
So for us as the elementary board, I don't see what that specific agenda item is.
So, so let me, let me answer that again, uh, let me attempt to answer it. So the specific agenda items that I see as potentially creating the appearance of a conflict of interest would be an agenda item about a, an employee bringing a grievance, or an agenda item wherein this board potentially critiques the superintendent or assistant superintendent.
But by that.
Those are not the, the, the subject of tonight's agenda, but those would be a specific agenda items.
So you're, you're assuming like these things are. And Jeff, sorry, it's five thirty, I'm sorry, I've done something wrong.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, but we had another board meeting, but I just want to point out that, that for me is the lineups.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and are you stuck in that, you disagree with how I just answered the question?
No, I disagree, that is not part of this board, we don't hire assistant superintendent.
Okay, do you disagree that this board might have to render a decision about a grievance, a grievance made by employee?
At some point.
Certainly.
But that's true, but, but this is for assistant superintendent, so that's the conflict of interest, is that position?
Right.
And so.
And the reason why I raised that was because there are ESD employees who were on the screening committee, who would be on the hiring committee, who potentially could view uh, this board not siding with them as a form of retaliation.
Are you on the board? Are you hired on the hiring committee?
So, I'm not on the hiring committee, so.
Do you know where the status of my employment is?
Nope, I don't, I don't know who's applied, apart from you, I don't know who's applied, I don't know who is on the screening committee, I don't know who's in the hiring committee, I don't know what that process is.
It's a problem, you know, but you don't know of anyone else.
I, I, but I guess I would say if any other board members were applying, I would probably know about that. Because that's where the.
Can I offer, so the next meeting for this group is? They've opened, but they paused pending of court.
August fourteenth.
August fourteenth?
October fourteenth, sorry, I may have said, October fifteenth.
We, we can, we can invite your counsel to come to the meeting and clarify any questions folks have.
Sounds like a lot of questions. And then, and that's, and, and that would be an executive session, because we're getting direct legal advice.
Everything should have been an executive session.
Except not according to our policies, not according to our policies. So, so last, just, just to quickly round out the agenda, committee appointments. Um, I wanted to put on the record that I volunteered to serve on the negotiating committees that are, that are upcoming, so that process will be going on again. Also, because the, one of the functions that, that the board chair is charged with is making appointments to certain committees, some are elected, lots of them are appointed. I have, I had appointed Sandy to the policy committee. Because I believe there is this conflict of interest, and because, as I've stated, I believe it is the role of this board to be crystal clear to the public that we are not complicit with any appearance of conflict of interest. Part of that strikes me, as, as me as board chair needing to rescind that appointment of, of Sandy to the policy committee. The policy.
I thought we were, um, actually vulgar on.
You're not, not the policy, the only, the only voted sort of committee representation, maybe want to call committee is to the SU. Everything else is appointed. Right.
So.
The, the policy committee, for, and I, I, I'm worried at the time, the policy committee has functions that I think are potentially, uh, uh, compromised due to what I view as this appearance of a conflict of interest, so I'm rescinding Sandy's appointment to the policy committee.
I'm against any rescinding of anything until we consult with Dina.
I agree.
So, I, I will say, I have consulted with Dina on that point, and she said, yes, the board, and in fact, Sandy has seen that email. Sandy has seen the email wherein Dina had, or at least she was, you were, you were a, a recipient on that email, but you've seen it. Wherein, Dina talks about the points and rules of order that govern exactly what's on, the rescinding of appointments, so the lawyer has to. So, this is not a pleasant conversation. I would like to reiterate, I don't think poorly of Sandy at all, at all. It's one thing, i- if there's a difference between holding someone in high regard and still being able to deal with the consequences of their choices and not thinking of them in high regard.
Maybe we should shut somebody.
I hold Sandy in incredibly high regard, as I think is evidenced by, by the times that I have appointed Sandy for positions. I've turned to Sandy for advice, even talked about, talked to Sandy once upon a time about being board chair. I hold Sandy and continue to hold Sandy in incredibly high regard, it doesn't change the fact that I think the integrity of this board has been compromised by a choice that she made. And we as a board are answerable to our constituents, not to each other. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go for it.
We got one, we got two, and no discussion about adjourning? Thank you very much, all of you in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Yea.
Opposed? Any intentions? Very good, thanks, everyone.